... and lawns for our residents and our city manager conceded himself that this is appearing to be a constant problem. I know I've been getting more and more calls about it and having to go out and visit these sites and I know I've voted before on not making final payments until work is completed. I've been voted against, down on that, but I really think we need to hold our contractors responsible for making sure work is done before we issue final payments. So, I would like some report on that or some kind of information about what's going to be done to alleviate those problems in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Lipke.
I don't know how I can top Councilman Mandy Voor Garde doing some manual labor and constable person DeForest taking a bath 25 times, but I'll try. I was fortunate to be part of the City of Beloit Recreation Department's Second Annual Triathlon. We had 121 participants and the majority of those people came from out of Beloit and over the years that we, over the, we had a run of 20 years originally and we had a break and the City Rec Department has started this triathlon again. The majority of participants come from out of the city and they come from Chicago area, Milwaukee, et cetera. The compliments that I personally have heard about the beauty of Beloit, the maintenance in Beloit and just the overall goodness of the people of Beloit is just very gratifying to hear. So, kudos to the city, to the Rec Department for that. Also was pleased to go over last Thursday to see the new apartments looking over the river towards the college and just beautiful apartments through community development and love those energy efficient washers and dryers and just other amenities. So, the individuals who are fortunate enough to rent these apartments will have a beautiful home for many years to come. So, again, kudos to the Community Development Authority for the nice job down there. That's all I have.
Counselor Spitzer.
I also had a chance to see the apartments. They're indeed beautiful and I think the staff, especially Kathy Pollard, who worked on making that happen deserve a real kudos because it really was done to the specification of what the residents wanted and I think a fantastic example of how to do that project. I also want to remind residents to be safe on the Fourth of July and to also be aware of the burn ban that's in effect regarding fireworks because of the temperatures and drought that we've been having. But be sure to have fun and come down to Riverside Park for the Pop on the Rocks concert and the city fireworks. We'll all have a good time down there as a community and stay safe together.
Counselor Leavie.
I'm just trying to think about Councilor DeForest and the dunk take and I don't think that publicity went out at our last meeting. And I'm just, I'm just, you know, kind of shocked because any other time it's like she's saying, "I'm going to be here and I'm going to be there." But that never went out to the public to say that I'm going to be, that I'm going to be at Riverfest in a dunk take because I really think the high school could have made a whole lot of money had you put that out there like you normally do. Sheila, just wanted to pass that on, you know, to you. I'm also one that likes to promote the city and point out the positive things about it and I often say it's always the people outside of the city who, what a great city we have. That was true last week when I'm sitting at home, a few times I sit at home and watch TV and I'm watching the Charlie Sheen episode of his new show, Anger Management, and I'm sitting there listening and he's talking about Beloit, Wisconsin. And I think that was just great. I mean, I was just excited because I said, "Beloit's in Hollywood now" and for a TV show, a brand new TV show, to list Beloit, Wisconsin, I don't think that's just something that they look on the map and say, "We're going to pick this city." That something had to attract somebody's attention about this city for it to be on that program. So, I want to give kudos to all the employees, the staff, the citizens and everyone who lives in this great city and who promotes this city because truly, to me, I counted that as an honor that you're on national TV in prime time on a new show and then they didn't say it once, they said it a couple of times. So, that lets me know that somebody involved in that show has been to Beloit or has heard about the great things that we're doing and I just encourage everyone to keep on promoting the positives and not so much the negatives about the city, but promote the positives because evidently it's paying off. That's my comments.
Thank you, Kevin.
Well, this last week, I met myself with the city manager as well. We took the Highway 51 tour with the Beloit Brewery Club and we brought into town several people from outside of the community and we went on a tour of Old 51 all the way to Curly. I think it's significant that we brought in some people from other places, Madison, Spring Green, and they were incredibly impressed. At the other end, they even said that we had the nicest city on the tour. And we went through Madison and DeForest and Stevens Point and La Salle and it was very, very impressive. I was very, very pleased by that. I also would like to point out that my rain gauge, I haven't been less than a quarter inch out of it in the last two months. Things are, our lawns, our trees are tender boxes. I would advise that you be extremely cautious in dealing with things in this Fourth of July because it could come to be fairly quickly and fairly heavily as the news tells us. So, I think that's all I have today. Next thing is out in Thames, the city manager's presentation.
Mr. President, we actually have no presentation this evening, but I just wanted to quickly reiterate for the public that the July 4th celebration, of course, will be held on Wednesday, July 4th, and is scheduled and all the activities will be in Riverside Park. We've been getting phone calls by people confused by the fact that Riverfest was downtown this year and they're thinking July 4th is also going to be down here. The celebration will be in Riverside Park, same location as always. The fire department has taken some special precautions this year so that we can have our wonderful fireworks celebration.
They're awake.
And again, as Counselor Spitzer mentioned earlier, we would recommend that everybody be very, very careful with any kind of fireworks.
... and lawns for our residents and our city manager conceded himself that this is appearing to be a constant problem. I know I've been getting more and more calls about it and having to go out and visit these sites. And I know I voted before on not making final payments until work is completed. I've been voted against, down on that, but I really think we need to hold our contractors responsible for making sure work is done before we issue final payments. So I would like some report on that or some kind of information about what's going to be done to alleviate those problems in the future. Thank you.
Counselor Lipke.
I don't know how I can top Councilman Vandy Bogart doing some manual labor and counsel person DeForest taking a bath 25 times.
I'll try. I was fortunate to be part of the City of Beloit's Recreation Department's second annual triathlon. We had 121 participants and the majority of those people came from out of Beloit. And over the years that we, over the, we had, we had a run of 20 years originally and we had a break and the City Rec Department has, has started this triathlon again. The majority of participants come from out of the city and they come from Chicago area, Milwaukee, et cetera. The compliments that I personally have heard about the beauty of Beloit, the maintenance in Beloit, and just the overall goodness of the people of Beloit is just very gratifying to hear. So kudos to the, the city, to the Rec Department for that. Also was pleased to go over last Thursday to see the, the new apartments looking over the river towards the college and, and just beautiful apartments through community development. And love those energy efficient washers and dryers and just other amenities. So the individuals who are fortunate enough to rent these apartments will have a beautiful home for many years to come. So again, kudos to the Community Development Authority for the, the nice job down there. That's all I have.
Counselor Spitzel.
I also had a chance to see the apartments. They're indeed beautiful. And I think the staff, especially Kathleen Pollard, who worked on making that happen deserve a, a real kudos because it really was done to the specification of what the residents wanted. And I think a fantastic example of how to do that project. Also want to remind residents to be safe on the Fourth of July and to also be aware of the burn ban that's in effect regarding fireworks because of the temperatures and drought that we've been having. But be sure to have fun and come down to Riverside Park for the Pop on the Rocks concert and the city fireworks. We'll all have a good time down there as a community and stay safe together.
Counselor Levy.
I'm just trying to, to think about Counselor DeForest and the dunk take. And I don't think that publicity went out at our last meeting. And I'm just, I'm just, you know, kind of shocked because any other time it's like she's saying, I'm going to be here and I'm going to be there. But that never went out to the public to say that I'm going to be, that, that I'm going to be at River Fest in a dunk take because I really think the high school could have made a whole lot of money had you put that out there like you normally do. Sheila, just wanted to pass that on, you know, to you. I'm also one that likes to promote the city and point out the positive things about it. And, and I often say it's always the people outside of the city who, what a great city we have. That was true last week when I'm sitting at home, a few times I sit at home and watch TV. And I'm watching the Charlie Sheen episode of his new show, Anger Management. And I'm sitting there listening and he's talking about Beloit, Wisconsin. And I think that was just great. I mean, I was just excited because I said, Beloit's in Hollywood now. And for, for a TV show, a brand new TV show to list Beloit, Wisconsin, I don't think that's just something that they look on the map and say, we're going to pick this city. That something had to attract somebody's attention about this city for it to be on that program. So I want to give kudos to all the employees, the staff, the citizens, and everyone who lives in this great city and who promotes this city. Because truly, to me, I counted that as an honor that you're on national TV in prime time on a new show. And, and they didn't say it once. They said it a couple of times. So that lets me know that somebody involved in that show has been to Beloit or has heard about the great things that we're doing. And I just encourage everyone to keep on promoting the positives and not so much the negatives about the city, but promote the positives because evidently it's paying off. That's my comments.
Thank you, Kevin.
Well, this last week, I met myself with the city manager as well. We took the Highway 51 tour with the Beloit Rotary Club and we brought into town several people from outside of the community. And we went on a tour of Old 51 all the way through. I think it's significant that we brought in some people from other places, Madison, Spring Green. And they were incredibly impressed. And at the other end, they even said that we had the nicest city on the tour. And we went through Madison and DeForest and Stevens Point and Wausau. And it was, it was very, very impressive. I was very, very pleased by that. I also would like to point out that my rain gauge, I haven't been less than a quarter inch out of it in the last two months. Things are, our lawns, our trees are tinderboxes. I would advise that you be extremely cautious in dealing with things on this Fourth of July because it could come to grief fairly quickly and fairly easily as the news tells us. So I think that's all I have today. Next thing is item 10, the city manager's presentation.
Mr. President, we actually have no presentation this evening, but I just wanted to quickly reiterate for the public that the July 4th celebration, of course, will be held on Wednesday, July 4th and is scheduled. And all the activities will be in Riverside Park. We've been getting phone calls by people confused by the fact that River Fest was downtown this year and they're thinking July 4th is also going to be down here. The celebration will be in Riverside Park, same location as always. The fire department has taken some special precautions this year so that we can have our wonderful fireworks celebration.
They're awake.
And again, as Counselor Spitz earlier, we would recommend that everybody be very, very careful with any kind of fireworks, any kind of open flame. And instead, come down to Riverside Park and join the community down there for the wonderful fireworks celebration. Some of the artists will start playing at 7:45 this year. The fireworks will follow immediately after the conclusion of the concert.
Thank you, sir, the city manager. Number 11, reports from boards and city officers. Item A, resolution amending the 2009 capital improvements budget for P for project 5003444-5514-2009.
Thank you. That's a mouthful. I don't know why I put all those numbers in there. But it's the Gateway Boulevard construction that is being amended. The 2009 capital improvement budget provided appropriate revenue sources for construction of the, the project from TIF 10. Additional state and federal money was promised at the time we were preparing the budget in late 2008 until it turned over to three to three and a half million dollars. Unfortunately, they only came up with a little over $2 million for us when all was said and done. Again, this was all really pretty much found money for us. So we had at least a $2.2 million savings from what was originally anticipated. But because of our fiscal responsiveness, we did not borrow the extra $1.275 million that we are needing to have funded to finish the payments for these projects. So we're asking you to allow us to use fund balance in the TIF 10 instead of borrowing and make it so we can close out this project. Questions?
Let's move, get a resolution.
I'd move approval, Mr. President.
Second.
I would have a question, Mr. President. Our mics apparently are all live, so it's hard to tell. This isn't, this is a appropriate expense for TIF district expenditure, is it not?
Indeed, it's public infrastructure, yes.
And what does that leave us with the TIF situation there in 10? How does that leave us?
We have funding still available. We're very, very okay. From what finance tells us.
And I believe it was left in the TIF fund balance after this expenditure is accounted for. We also set aside enough money to purchase the North Star site. If you recall, we were going to buy that out of cash as well.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Spitzel.
What was the nature of the agreement with the state? I mean, how firm do we think that money was? Is this something we run into very often or is this a unique case?
This was a unique case because this is about the same time that they were doing all the special funding for the ARRA. We are not ARRA funded.
What is the?
American Recovery and Realization Act.
The stimulus.
The stimulus funding. But the state had a pool of money that was left over from projects that came in either under budget or did not use all their contingencies that they were required to spend first before they could access their stimulus funding. So it was an accounting nightmare for them. They knew they had a range. They gave us what they thought was accurate. And as they finalized their accounting, it came up short from what they'd originally anticipated. But we weren't going to say no to 2.2 million either. So it was just a timing issue based on when the DOT finishes their accounting when, from when we do our budget process. We knew it was looming out there. We had hopes that maybe we would be able to make it all work out okay. And it didn't. So that's why we're here.
Mr. President, could I just quickly add that this resolution basically shifts the revenue or part of the revenue to cover the cost of the project from possible grant and aid to using fund balance, all within TIF District number 10. None of this is general purpose revenues of the city. And the underlying allocation for the cost of the project is not being amended. The project actually came in somewhat below the original budget. And again, the budget itself is not being amended. It just authorizes us to shift money out of fund balance to cover the final bill for the project.
It's more or less an accounting measure to assure an audit trail.
Sorry. This might be a question that Andrew would have to answer. So I think I heard that we feel like the amount that we're expecting to contribute towards North Star development is still covered.
Yes, that was all covered.
Was there any other expenses that we were anticipating that were supposed to come out of TIF 10 that might be an issue?
He's shaking his head, no.
No, no, everything else was covered. No, we took into consideration, pardon me, all the debt service costs, all the development agreements that we have, the purchase of the real estate for North Star. And this is money that's still left after that. All those expenditures are accounted for.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? All right, motion second.
Motion to accept.
So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Item 11B, a resolution approving an upgrade in the audiovisual equipment in the forum. City manager.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we noted during the agenda review session, the technology here in City Hall is, is archaic, I think is the kindest way to put it. And there's a lot missing from our huge recorder box over there that still uses old cassette tapes to our screen for PowerPoints that sets at about a 30-degree angle off plumb, plus the old cameras and equipment that we try to do cable presentations with. About 12 years ago, the city, under its public access contract with Beloit College, began setting aside about $20,000 a year in a special equity account to replace this equipment. The plan was to do all of that in conjunction with the remodeling of the council chambers, which would likely be part of a larger City Hall remodeling that would follow the police station relocation project. I think we all know today that none of that is going to be happening in, in the next few years, at the very least. And, and we've reached a point now where we absolutely need to replace this old equipment. Having funds set aside made it possible for us to get some quotes. And we went out and did that. And we got actually two quotes. The one that we are recommending to you tonight was from AVI, which is a technology firm out of Madison. The cost for all of this stuff includes the cable, all the cable TV equipment, new cameras, new control panel. It includes the new public address system that apparently we're struggling with again tonight to get this thing going, recording equipment. It includes flat panel monitors up here and a control module that'll be located here at my station and another one by the clerk station so that we'll be able to control presentations that are made during the meetings. That will allow us to have our PowerPoints done on these flat panel monitors so they'll be viewable by the counselors. There'll be another panel up on the overhead here for the audience so they'll be able to see the presentations. Also, the director producer that's in the control room back here will be able to switch back and forth. So he'll actually be able to show the slides to, on the cable presentation, the people that are watching at home. So they'll be able to see them rather than a shadow of the old screen as they do now. All of this equipment put together came up to a cost of about $60,000. We have more than enough money in this account to pay for this without touching any of our general purpose tax revenue. These funds came from the cable TV fees. And again, were set aside over a number of years specifically for this purpose. So in order for us to make this upgrade, we need to do a supplemental appropriation to allow for the expenditure of those funds out of that special account based on the AVI proposal that we've received. And you have a copy of that, a copy of it was attached to the agenda this evening. I also want to quickly add that most if not all of this equipment would be usable if and when we ever get to a point of remodeling the council chambers, certainly within the next four to six years with, in what you would consider to be the normal lifespan for fairly high technology equipment, that would all be reusable. So if we reach the point where we're able to do that project someday, the equipment could be retained. With that, if there are any questions or comments, I'll be happy to answer those at this time.
Okay. Before we, before we do that, let's do this in order and get a resolution, get a movement to approve the resolution.
I move.
I'll second. I have a question as well.
Excellent. Motion by Vanda Bogart, second by DeForest. And I'll start with you, Jim.
I just, I'm in favor of your, of the resolution, obviously, but I wanted to comment on the, what is not timely passing upon the individuals who was running the audiovisual equipment Ryan.
Yes.
Passed away over the last weekend. But he's a young man and I didn't protect him well. But he was here every night helping us communicate with the public. He was a young man, but he'll be missed.
Counselor DeForest.
Yeah, thank you. I was also going to share my condolences to Ryan's family and friends on his passing. And I also have a question. I was wondering, I know staff was recommending that we accept the proposal from AVI out of Madison. I'm just wondering, was the other proposal by any chance that we received from a local vendor?
No, the other proposal was from Home &amp; Pro. Janesville, Milwaukee, Madison, none of them were, were local.
Okay.
And we do have experience with AVI. They also gave us the lowest, I'm sorry, Home &amp; Pro was the other one. Let me see where they're from. I guess they are out of Janesville. But they were about $2,000 higher for the same equipment. Some of our IT staff have worked with AVI, were familiar with the quality of their work, and they've done some other work in the building here. So they were very comfortable with that firm.
Thank you.
And I'd like to point out that this, this equipment here is very nearly probably original to the building.
Yes, very close.
And didn't work at all last week. It's barely working. This is very timely. So thank you very much. Any other comments or questions?
Just a quick question. The board, I believe we anticipated retaining the voting board in the back, which is rarely used this day in time. Is there an interest in, in retaining that on the part of counselors? Or would you like us to get, move, remove that as well as part of the upgrade? Well, maybe it's a little bit short notice to comment on that tonight. But think about it, we have a little time.
It's historic.
It's quite historic. That is, that is correct. Certainly if we take it out, we would offer it to the historical society.
I have, I have no preference.
I think it, I think it's helpful to the public to see, to see who's flashing if the flashers are working so they know who's up. But I don't know, have we ever, have we ever actually used the voting capacity?
Very, very rarely. We haven't used that in a number of years. We do have occasional roll call votes and they're usually done just by voice, not by the use of the panel. We'll have to take a look at that. I'm not sure we'll be able to interface with that because of its age. So we'll let you know how that plays out. Possibly there's another way to at least get a list up there that we could board that would light up to show people who's present.
All right then. We'll call the measure. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that passes 6-0. And the last item on the agenda is adjourned. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll second.
Levy and second by DeForest. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes 6-0, we are adjourned.